I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 26, 2022 regular meeting to order. Please stand for the pitch. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, roll call. Ms. Betterbit?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Valloway?
Here.
Mr. Seng? Excuse me. Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Stadler?
Delayed.
Ms. Seer?
Here. Thank you.
Can you review the [inaudible]?
Exit cert in the back of the LGI.
And I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board will return in, I guess it's...
Well, forty-five minutes. So moved.
Second.
Alyssa, Craig, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, passes six to zero. Thanks for your patience, everyone. We're gonna start with open to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public statement? I'm looking at you.
No, I'm just listening today.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay.
Oh, yeah.
Not to make anyone...
Of course.
You know, there isn't... It's not often spectators.
I was like, what?
I was always like...
That's not always been the case.
And you, the one who's not usually here, you know, I thought I'd listen out. Like, yeah, we chat.
Yeah.
This is your [inaudible].
Great, well, good to see you again. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, 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 I don't mind.
Welcome to come to every meeting, speak at some, not at others. No pressure. I will never call you out directly again. I'll wait for you to...
Oh, feel free. Kelly, what are you doing here today?
All right.
She's too far apart.
Perfect. Oh, great, awesome, awesome. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? I don't think so. So we're gonna move on to workshop. Tonight, we're talking about professional development, our professional learning plan with Siglario and Rudisindo O'Neil. You get ready?
All right, good evening, everyone. I am so excited because I love talking about professional development. But before I get into my presentation, I just wanted to just very quickly, just kinda do a little bit, a quick, like, sixty-second recap of kinda like the three-year plan. If you recall, in the three-year plan, which is, of course, with a five-year vision, you know, there were certain things that we wanted to kinda hit, you know? So we talked a lot about professional development. We talked about data analysis. We talked about goal setting, as well as doing alignment with the standards. So I always like to kinda go back to what I promised, you know, in the beginning of the year. And we've made a lot of headway, looking at cell, looking at our equity framework. Actually, this week, kinda talking about equity was very exciting. We did spend close to seventy-five thousand dollars on culturally authentic textbooks, texts that came in this week. So all of our teachers, K eight, actually received a shipment of books that they're gonna be using for guided reading, that they're gonna be using as mentor texts. They have over fifty titles that have been added to their libraries, and over thirty-five titles that are gonna be added to their small group instruction and guided reading. So very, very excited about that. And all the books...
Is there anything for the high school, or is it...
High school, we're working something differently. We're actually doing curriculum mapping in high school. So actually, every English teacher is now redoing their maps and making, kinda looking at, making sure that it's more representative. So once we do that, then we're gonna be ordering some more stuff for them as well. So I'm working with John Johnson, who's our English content coordinator. He's amazing. So, and they've already done a lot of work as well, because they have shared their syllabus with me, because I kinda wanted to get a baseline as to what was being done in the English department. You know, I'm not a math and science person. I've been honest about that, but I am a literacy person, and I always like to see what our kids are reading, you know? And based on our focus group, as you know, we wanna make sure that we, our students wanna be here, and that they're engaged, and that they see that what we're doing is relevant to their lives. So that's really exciting. So I kinda wanted to share that, because that was a highlight of this week, of last week, when we got all those books. I forgot they were coming, because they were delayed. As you know, because of COVID, there was this huge, the books were supposed to be here in January. So because of COVID, a lot of the stuff was being available in digital form. So believe it or not, the publishers were not publishing really a lot of books. So when we asked for this massive order, the company we're working with literally had to go to over fifty publishers to fill the order. And there were some books that we just couldn't even get, so we had to replace them. So they would send me the copies of, like, the titles of the books that, we can't find these, can we replace it with this? And then I would have to look into it just to make sure, because I didn't wanna replace a culturally authentic text with one that wasn't, because that was, what's the point? You know, so they were able to replace it with something that was comparable. The other nice thing is that every teacher got a master spreadsheet, so they're able to kinda look at their grade level, find the title of the book, find the genre, find out what the book is about, and figure out how to use it within their classroom, because we are focusing on guided reading. Because I know that's kinda like, when you don't know, you don't know exactly what's out there, trying to figure out, well, what book can I use to talk about families and all the ways that families are important? You wanna be able to go to some kind of a reference and find, oh, there's a perfect book here on families and how families are represented. As we know, families look different. I know I was raised in a single-parent household, but I was also raised by my mother, my grandmother, amazing Dominican tough women that made me the woman I am today. And I would have loved to have seen a book like that, you know, when I was growing up, and now those books are available. So I think we need to seize on those opportunities. So it's exciting, it's an exciting time. All right, so you ready to learn about professional development? I can see excitement in everyone's face. All right. All right, so these are our professional learning goals for the 2022, 2023 school year. So focusing first on a category of excellence. Again, Beacon already uses the Wilson Foundations Program. One of the things that we're doing are, we are doing a reintroduction of the Wilson Foundations Program. COVID really disrupted a lot of the professional learning that was around foundations. So what ended up happening was that the program was really not being implemented with the fidelity that we wanted. We have a lot of students that have come in, particularly in K two, with a lot of learning gaps because of COVID. And foundations is a program that really meets with the five levels of reading that we're supposed to be teaching our kids according to the standards. So there's a professional development plan for that, and I'm gonna be involved with. We are continuing with our workshop model. We started this year in ELA, looking at guided reading, looking at small group instruction, doing those interactive read-alouds. Again, now we have the materials to really do them well, because it's very hard to pull a small group of students when you don't have the books to really be able to do that instruction. So now we have the materials to do it, and we're gonna continue with that guided reading instruction. In terms of the workshop model, we are gonna be slowly transitioning into math, teaching math the way we teach literacy. And the reason for that is, when we look at our data, the subject that really has been impacted the most with COVID has been math. Our students are really struggling with a lot of the conceptual knowledge around math, and it has a lot to do with the fact that we have a lot of students who are remote. When you're teaching math, particularly for our young ones, you need manipulatives. You need to be able to have, you know, the concrete before you can go into the abstract. And when that's absent, it's very, very difficult then for students to internalize all the concepts that they're supposed to learn. So what research is showing now is that they're doing a lot of researching the impact on COVID. So obviously, we know that the impact has been social-emotional learning. We know our students have been traumatized. We know our adults have been traumatized. But the subject that has been the most impacted has been math, and that has been across the United States. So it's not a Beacon thing, it's actually a United States of America thing. So one of the ways that they have suggested would be a good model to implement would be the workshop model and to do more small group instruction. So students are able to work with a teacher, you know, you have, you do your, kinda your workshop model where you introduce a concept, you break students up into small groups, and the students alternating. So there's some independent work that's being done, but there's that small group instruction with the teacher, so they're getting a little bit more of direct instruction. I am so upset that Anthony is not here, because I so want, I was like dreaming about this, and he's missing it. But we are focusing, and if you remember, when I introduced our three-year goals, science was kinda towards year three. Well, we fast-tracked it. So next year, we are gonna be introducing Science 21 in fourth and fifth grade. We're gonna be using, we're gonna be working with PNW Boses. So that's something that's coming to Beacon, very excited about that. In preparation for our current third graders, we're gonna be taking a new fifth-grade science test, you know? So I'm gonna get into a little bit more detail later on in PowerPoint. We're gonna continue with our, working with Dutchess County Boses to ensure that all instructors of science are retrained in the Next Generation Standards in Science and Inquiry Model. That is something that had begun before COVID, and that everyone had an opportunity to go to the workshops, and we are expected to be within full implementation within two years. So we wanna make sure that people have the knowledge, you know, in order to do it. We are continuing, we are in the middle of, right now, our curriculum mapping. We're gonna continue curriculum mapping. Again, I talked about how curriculum mapping, for as long as I'm here, will always happen in perpetuity, you know? Because that's something that should be in a live document, not something that you do at one time and you stick it up on the website, always alive, always being revised, always being better, and enhancing them. And of course, iReady, we are working with Dutchess County Boses to have iReady be supported within the classroom. Next year, we are, we're adding another component to iReady that I'm gonna talk about in a little bit. Equity, we're gonna continue introducing the different, the domains of the culturally responsive framework that New York State has put out. We are also looking at how we're supporting our students' social-emotional learning. We are gonna continue to work with Dutchess County and the Center for Equity. So this year, we did have Javon Hunter work with about five teachers, looking at planning for what he called critical units. So we are gonna continue our work with him. Under sustainability, we are working with the Center for Climate and Sustainability. Next year, we will be involved in an assessment to see how our district is really complying with sustainability and climate. So we are gonna be working, I believe his name is Jamie Cloud, I believe is the name is?
Her, her name is...
Jamie, you're right. So I'm gonna be working, we're gonna be working with him to begin with the assessment.
Is that through Dutchess Boses?
Yes, that's through Dutchess Boses, yep. We are also looking at a responsive intervention. We are reframing our model here in Beacon. I'm gonna talk a little bit about that in a couple of slides, really looking at how we can make it more cohesive, how we can make it to ensure that teachers have the tools that they need to meet students where they are, and ensuring that when a student does have to be referred, that we have the data that actually supports that referral. So going, talking about Wilson. So right now, one of the things that we've done is that we have set aside money, and we have been retraining our K to teachers in Wilson Foundations. Everyone is expected to be retrained by September, so that includes anyone that will potentially move from an upper grade to a lower grade. The expectation is that everyone's gonna do that five-hour overview, including any new hires in September. If we have anyone throughout the year that gets hired in K two, they will be sent to one of the five-hour overviews. The overviews are really important, because that's really, again, to the nitty-gritty of the philosophy behind foundations, really go through the kit, how they're supposed to use the units of study, how they're supposed to do their unit plans, which is part of our data collection. That's how you know there's mastery at the end of every unit, doing those unit tests. That is gonna be supported throughout the year then by me. I am Wilson-trained, so I will be working with teachers throughout the years, doing demo lessons, helping them plan, making sure that they're implementing everything with fidelity. Part of that training is also gonna be training the administrators to understand what the expectations are, but also understand what foundations is and what they're seeing when they walk into the classroom. So when they're walking in, they should be able to see a foundations lesson and know if it's being done correctly. So that's gonna be part of the training. There's also a checklist that goes along with the foundations program, ensuring that we have the alphabet that represents foundations, that we have the appropriate charts, that we have all the consumable materials that our students need. So we are taking care of all of that as well. Emma Marie's probably giving me the stink eye, because she knows I'm spending a lot of money. I know. But it's good money, it's good stuff, it's good stuff. And some of the kits that we're gonna be purchasing as well, it's a one-time purchase that we need, and then after that, it's just buying the consumables, which is not a big deal. So I'm trying to be fiscally responsible. All right. So again, talking about the workshop model, so this year, we started with ELA, because that is the easiest place to start with the workshop model. We really looked at guided reading, because research says that guided reading is the best way that we can move students up, the different levels in reading. One of the things that we looked at was really our interactive read-alouds, ensuring that every child, when they walked into a classroom, had different opportunities to hear text across all different content, but also across all different level. So we don't want students going into a classroom and only reading at their independent level. We want them exposed to rich vocabulary that they can access on their own, and that is through the interactive read-aloud. We want them to have opportunities to practice their literacy skills, and that's when they're reading on their own, independently reading. And then in guided reading, it's at instructional level, where the teacher's doing that direct instruction, working on specific skills, giving them strategies. Foundations is part of the thirty-minute block. It is a two-hour ELA block that we're doing, and Foundation serves us at thirty-minute, doing phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, phonics. There is a writing component, as well as a comprehension component to Foundations. Supposed to be done in a nice, neat thirty-minute block, but as we know in the beginning, it'll take the teachers a little longer. We're gonna work on that, but they'll get it pretty quickly. And then transitioning into the workshop model. So again, within the workshop model in math, the way it looks is that the teacher does a main lesson. That lesson's about fifteen or twenty minutes. The students practice that skill, but as they are practicing that skill, the teacher is pulling groups. So they are only really working independently, maybe for about ten, fifteen minutes, so there's that guided. And then at the end of those small groups, there is a share and a review. So we are going into phase two of our iReady implementation. We are adding a component of iReady called the Teacher Toolbox. The Teacher Toolbox is basically a bank of resources that our standards align for the teachers to use for direct instruction. So it's not another version of personalized learning, so there isn't an increase in that. These are actually materials that teachers are gonna be able to use in both reading as well as math. One of the things that we were hearing from our staff was that they don't always have a lot of resources to really be able to work with students. First of all, your kids who are, we sometimes forget our kids who are, need enrichment, because we have some students that are on grade level. We wanna push them. So the nice thing about this Teacher Toolbox is that there are materials there for those really high kids. Because oftentimes, I feel like we punish the kids that are doing well by giving them more work, instead of giving them something different. And we can't keep doing that. You know, if they're already at grade level, they don't have to do what everyone else is doing. They can start being exposed to higher grade-level concepts. They can do something that's a little bit more challenging for them, so it's at their level, not giving them more work. Because I know if I was a student doing well, I don't want more work. I wanna show off what I know how to do, but don't reward me by giving me a folder of extra worksheets. So, but then also with that is that they're gonna be able to have extra supplemental resources for a lot of their lessons. And that includes also guided reading. So if there is a particular group of students that are really struggling, let's say, with creating sentences, there are some extra lessons in the Teacher Toolbox that they can download, they can actually teach them, and they can actually pull a small group and give them a couple of more extra lessons. We are gonna be, again, in this year, we were kinda dabbling with the recommended forty-five minutes a week in each subject. Next year, that is gonna be the expectation, as much as it is developmentally appropriately, appropriate. Because again, if we have students where that's not their best option, then they're not gonna do it. You know, because we're always gonna do what's best, what's in the best interest of students. We do have some students that really can't sustain, even though it's per week, but those students will be modified. We are looking right now at data, so I'm excited at the end of the school year, I will be able to show you some full-year data, so you can see some of the growth that we've done this year. Foundations is one data point that I'll be able to share with you. There is no testing data, because last year, we really didn't have any students participate in state testing, and the year before, there was no state testing. But at least with iReady, there's a K eight, one K eight data point that's consistent, that we can share, that we can kinda use to kinda do some goal setting. So again, we're gonna have someone who's gonna be working with our teachers on implementing the Teacher Toolbox, how they can utilize it, particularly the emphasis is gonna be direct instruction in small groups.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So I'm looking at the iReady Phase Two implementation of the Teacher Toolkit, as well as the previous slide, and you were going over the support for the balanced literacy. In 2223, you're saying that they're gonna use iReady in small groups. Where does that fit into that, those four sections that you have in the previous slide?
iReady is one of the menu of activities that could be done as a small group.
So they're not doing that every day?
No, no, no. So within a small group, the teachers have a different activities that they can do. They can do shared reading, they can do a traditional Funtas and Penel guided reading lesson, they can use iReady as the resource for that guided reading lesson. They can do, particularly with the younger grades, if they need to focus more on blending sounds, they can do a blend activity using foundations materials. For the upper grades, they could be a focus on vocabulary, you know? So it's gonna be a part of the menu.
Okay. And for the K two teachers, for the guided reading, are they gonna be using the GOs that come with Foundation, or are they using the F and P?
They have, they could use both. You know, so it's gonna depend on what the need of the student is. So the GOs that come with Foundations really reinforce that phonemic awareness and phonological, where it's like a practice. So if you have students, again, who, that's what they need, because they need a little bit more of that, because particularly in K two, there's two ways that you can do guided reading. So you can do it skill-based, or you can do it based on a comprehension lesson. So those GOs, I would not recommend for a comprehension lesson, because they're very simplistic, there's not a lot of story development. But our Guide, Funtas and Penel guided reading books, those are great resources to use, let's say, if we wanted to do context clues. You know, you can take one of those books that, again, culturally authentic, and talk about context clues. You can talk about main idea using those books. You can talk about cause and effect using those books. But the GOs are to support really the decoding part of the, of our instructional program, if that makes sense. Okay. All right. And again, Anthony's missing it, so science. PNW Boses have been developing Science 21, actually, for a number of years. They started in kindergarten and then started working their way up. These units of studies are actually developed by teachers for teachers. So that's a nice thing. And one of the things that PNW Boses does with Science 21 is, which I love, is that every year, they actually have teachers come back and revise the units of study. So they get feedback from the teachers, what's working, what's not working, how do we need to fix it? They pilot it, so they're constantly in motion. They send all our kits over, they replenish our kits, so we don't have to do anything, so we don't have to worry about buying science kits. And then there's pieces missing to it, and we have to try to find the pieces or order new pieces. They take care of all of that for us. And it comes with a lot of professional development. So before any unit can actually be taught, there's professional development that the teacher must attend first, then they deliver the unit, and then the teacher is able to teach it. Because, again, there is a cost to it, but it is aidable, because it is going through Boses. When, in consultation with some teachers, some administrators, as well as PNW Boses, there was a decision made that it's more manageable to first start in grade four and five versus trying to do K five, because that would be really, really overwhelming. So the decision for grades four and five was made, because our current third graders, bless you. They are the group that is going to take that new Next Generation Science Inquiry-Based Test. They'll be able to have fourth grade, the entire fourth grade, to work with their teachers, to get a lot of that background, a lot of that inquiry-based instruction. When they go then into fifth grade, they have a year under their belt, but at the same time, their fifth-grade teachers have a year under their belt of being immersed in teaching the program, you know? So, and then after that, we're gonna add third grade, then second grade, until we're all the way down to kindergarten. So we're gonna phase it in as the years go in. Now, until then, for next year, we're doing grades four and five, Mystery Science, which is also a program that is actually aligned to the Next Generation Standards. It's online, but it's not an online science program. There's lesson plans for the teachers to download, to modify, and then there's also experiments that the teachers can actually download, get the materials, and then teach to the kids. For next year, the expectation's going to be, and at the elementary level, that they must teach two hours of science every week, and they must teach two hours of social studies every week. And the reason, and the two hours of science must include one hour of a lab. So we are working out how the schedule's gonna look, so that I have some suggestions for some schedules that they're gonna be able to use. But there is enough time during the school week, during our instructional hours, set instructional hours, for this to be done, and still do our two hours of ELA, and still do our one hour of math. One of the things is that we have to make sure that we're preparing our kids to go into the secondary level. We can't say that some people are science people, some people are social studies people. Every child has a right to engage in science and social studies, so that's gonna be the expectation. The science, the social studies units that we're gonna be using are actually, New York State has actually developed some really nice units of study around social studies. They follow the New York State social study standards that are inquiry-based as well. Everything's already done for them, there's books that go along with it, so that's gonna be the expectation. We are gonna start some curriculum mapping in the secondary level to look at how we can enhance some of those lessons, make sure that they're aligned to the Next Generation Standards, but also, at the same time, that we're making them a little bit more engaging for our students, looking at kinda engagement based on those student focus groups. And then the last thing is, and this is a possibility, because we don't know yet, but there may be an opportunity to have some of our teachers engaged in summer curriculum work around physics and chemistry and biology, doing fifteen hundred hours of mapping. It's fifteen hundred, our students in the, in high school are expected to do twelve hundred hours of labs. New York is changing that for fun, you know, they're making things more rigorous, but this is an opportunity to people to be, for teachers to be engaged in the creation of fifteen hours, fifteen hundred hours of labs, so more than we need in order for them to, for us to implement them here in Beacon. And the reason I say possible is that the person that was going to be kinda facilitating this is now working in Middletown, so they're looking to replace him. So if they're able to find someone to facilitate this work, then we may have an opportunity to send two or three teachers. If not, then we have to figure something else out. So I put it up there as a hope and a dream, so we'll see. And then again, our curriculum mapping, I just wanted to kinda share with you, this year, these were some of the themes that we focused on when we started creating our curriculum maps. There was a template that was created. The template includes pulling our New York State standards and ensuring that every unit plan has the standards already embedded and identified. Essential questions have been developed for those units of study. We are making sure that our social-emotional learning standards that are up on New York State are also embedded within those units of study. And then we're using social justice standards as a guide to be embedded within those, within those unit plans as well. Because as we talked about before, equity shouldn't be a different pillar, it should be embedded in all the systems that we have in Beacon. So I don't, I didn't, we didn't think it was a good idea to be like, oh, a little piece of equity here, it should already be embedded in there. So every, so every unit of study that is being developed, there's those questions of, how am I doing this equitable? And I'm, am I representing the students as I'm doing this unit of study? Am I grading in a way that's equitable? How am I assessing? You know, so those questions have to be answered as they're developing these units of study. And then next year, we're gonna, again, continue writing, implementation, as well as revision. So the units that are going to be, actually be taught, there's gonna be opportunities to go back to them, to look at them, to revise them. Next year, we are gonna focus on developing rubrics, because those rubrics are gonna help us to have cohesion across the district, so that's gonna help us in terms of grading. We are gonna, there are a couple of teachers who are interested in integrating project-based learning into these units of study, so that's exciting. So we're gonna offer them some opportunities, and again, looking at assessment and scoring to make sure that it's kinda equitable. So that's kinda like a slow, you know, grading is a slow conversation that we're gonna start having, but we do have a number of teachers that have taken some, some professional learning on grading with equity, who are anxious to maybe start piloting some of this, so we're gonna have all those things going on next year.
Is that at every grade level?
Yeah, we have, yep. And then social-emotional learning. So we do have an opportunity to send some folks out for more responsive classroom training. One of the things that I am going to nudge is that our special area teachers, to kinda see if we can get all our special area teachers to be trained either in responsive classroom or zones of regulation. Because I feel that this is the group that they see every single student in the school, and I think this would be a good thing for them to have some background in. Now, responsive classroom is not a curriculum, it is actually a methodology. They do work at a company called Fly Five that does have a curriculum that's attached to it. I will say, the quote that we got was extronomical. I, it's really, really expensive. So I don't know if it's something that, I think there are other CASL-approved programs that are less expensive, Zones of Regulation being one of them. Zones of Regulation happens to be a curriculum. We do have our OTs, our PTs, our social workers are trained in it. We wanna continue to support them. We want to continue to support them in that training, so we don't want to remove it. We want to kind of keep it there because that really works for students to have more, to struggle a little bit more in terms of behavior, sensory. We have our social worker at the secondary level offering support. We're going to continue to work with the Center for Remediation and Restorative Practices. And every PLD day, there will be a ninety-minute session dedicated to social emotional learning. So that's something that we're going to hit throughout the year, as well as there's conversations of also, I know Corey's here, of doing some peer mediation.
Are we allowed to ask questions through?
Hold on, let me go back.
This is just a question I have about, I understand that behavior, sensory seeking behavior, or, you know, maybe having an outburst to sort of flag a student as having those sort of issues. I wonder, do we, do we train, or is there any way of spotting kids who it's outwardly, there's no behavioral issue, but they're internalizing a lot of their, you know, they're, they're not disrupting the class, but they're not thriving, they're not necessarily, they're, they're struggling. Do we have any, is that, I just don't know if that actually happens. And, and if, because I'm thinking that the kids who do exhibit this get flagged and then get services. And that there might be other kids in the class.
Well, I think with responsive classroom, if it's a methodology, then that hits every, every child. Yeah. But I know what you're talking, and again, within us, everything, we're dealing with everything in a continuum. So we know that we have students who maybe just need strategies, and then we have students who need more intensive support. And then we kind of go through this continuum. So I, I think we're working really hard in trying to make sure that, number one, everyone gets what they need. And then those students who need a little bit more are also getting what they need. So, so, so we know that when we talk about equity, it's not giving everyone the same thing. I think we start with kind of giving everyone the same thing to get a baseline, and then we kind of move from there.
Okay.
That was a good question, thank you. And then our diversity, equity, and inclusion, we're going to continue working on the framework. Again, this year, we did some introduction to the culturally responsive sustaining education framework in March, because again, equity is not just about race. So in March, we did focus on supporting our English as a New Language learners to make sure, you know, the type, you know, one of the things that we worked on was really ensuring that we all understand that all our E N L students belong to all of us. So we are all teachers of E N L students. And we had an organization called R V Arburn. They actually solely work with bilingual and E N L support systems. All their stuff is, is free. We were able to get a presenter to come and work with us, and it didn't cost us a dime. And that is my favorite price, right, Anne Marie, free? So, and they're experts, and they're amazing. They're really working with us also in looking at extra support and translations for our students, also making sure, for example, one of the nice things about iReady was that we were able to offer a Spanish assessment for our students. So they're able to participate, and it gave us a baseline for their native language. And there's also resources that we can download to support them. Particularly, we did have some situations this year where we had some students, some older students, that were missing several years of formal education. So we have, we have, for example, an eighth grade student that the last completed grade was second grade. So you can imagine the struggle of an eighth grader, they don't speak the language, their last formal, you know, grade level was second grade. So we were able to actually add this student to iReady and use all of the second and third grade Spanish resources there, and then start introducing some more, some harder concepts so they can get kind of caught up. We were able to also do that with a ninth grade student. So, and then again, continuing our work with Javon Hunter. So this year, we, we had five teachers that are working on critical problem-based learning. So that's basically looking at project-based learning, but through the lens of equity. So identifying social issues around social justice and kind of planning units of study with, with students around that. And we're going to begin discussions on equity focus walks. So I have a book that we're going to kind of be looking at. And what it, what that entails is basically looking at all your systems. If we look at, for example, education, if we look at the high school, looking at your AP classes, for example, who's there, who's not there? Looking at your suspensions, who's represented, who's not represented? Looking at special ed, who's there, who's not there? You know, so looking through those lens is going to also help us to make sure that we're looking at our students and ensuring that there aren't any disparities. That's a little bit of a tough conversation sometimes, but I think the one thing I love about Beacon, you're not afraid to look in the mirror. So I think that's great.
Do we, do we have, sorry, I meant.
Yeah.
And this is a tricky one, but I could, because I don't know how it fits into this framework, but do we, do we have any specific programming around gender? Simply because I think when kids are in school, there is more of a sense of a level playing field, although gaps do open up. But then we can look outside of schools, and there's an undeniable gap in terms of representation and positions of power, agency, things that, you know, influence us. And so do we ever consider that and what can be brought in to address that and any gaps that open up in terms of mathematics?
What do you mean, what do you mean about gender is equal representation of gender? Or?
No, I just mean.
Not traditional employment, like a female.
I mean, do we ever, I, I, I mean, just on even like a practical level, like, do we offer free sanitary products in the school bathrooms?
Oh, oh.
Things like that that start to.
Right. I know in fifth grade, that was always my favorite time of year as a principal, there is, we do have a wellness talk with our fifth grade students around the changes of their body. So that is something that is done, that is part of our, our curriculum. It's funny that you bring it up because right now we're working with the, with the principals because last year, I think last year because of COVID, we couldn't do it. But we are actually now having a hard time finding someone that can come in. My understanding it was that Planned Parenthood came in in the past and worked in Beacon. In my previous district, we actually used, Procter and Gamble actually had a series that we used to show. It was a video, and they sent goodie bags.
Right.
That we can, and so we are trying to make sure that we get it done this year as well.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, I'm not trying to make it a gotcha question. I just feel like it's always sort of.
Oh, no, no, I, I just didn't understand what you meant at first. Like, what do you mean, okay?
Well, what I'm saying is that if we look at like the markers in society, there is some, an undeniable trend that occurs. And so if we work backwards where we can have influence in schools, what, what do we, you know, do we normalize the idea of like, you need these supplies, there's no stigma about that? That would be one practical example. But even, I know schools do girls on the run at the elementary level, that's an extracurricular. A lot of the things, the topics that they're supposed to cover in that are related to relational aggression, which is like, they're not having outward fights, you know?
Right, right.
But they are like destroying each other emotionally. And it does in fact impact performance, a sense of belonging.
I would tell you, those kind of things, those relational things, that's embedded within our curriculum.
Okay.
So again, so if you look at the books that were ordered, the wonderful thing about the books is being able for, again, and I'll just use myself as an example. When I was in school, you know, I didn't read any books where someone who looked like me was a doctor or a lawyer. I was in a very unusual position, and my principal was actually an African-American woman, Dr. Dunbar. You know, and I know that at the time, I'm going to age myself in the early eighties, there was most of the principals in my district, and I worked in, and I lived in New York City, that people think is very diverse, but the administration was, and I was mostly white males. So I never really saw myself in these different, in books and stories where they, where I was in a position of power or of leadership. We have those books now. And be, and I think it's important that the books that we have in our building, it's not just, well, this black person, no, it's this doctor who happens to be black. Okay? This politician who happens to be Latinx. Because that's when it's normalized. I, I think it's, again, that's why even during these Black History Month and Women's Month, like, I, I think it's important to do a spotlight on excellence, but those shouldn't be the only month where we're reading about women who are scientists. That shouldn't be the only month we're reading about the Negro Leagues. They should, that should be throughout the entire year. So when we have those months where we're highlighting excellence as opposed to trauma, because I think that too much of that goes on as well, that we need to know our history, but it shouldn't all be around trauma. Because our country is built on the excellence of multiple groups and people. And I think when kids are able to see that, I think that kind of addresses a lot of what you're mentioning.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does, thank you.
And I didn't mean to get on a soapbox.
No, that's good. I mean, it's helpful, and I'll, I'll follow up with you some questions.
All right. So then my most exciting part is our responsive intervention, multi-tier support system. So we do have a committee that's been meeting. We've been looking at our RTI plan, which we know needed to be updated anyway because of COVID, it, it kind of expired. And we are looking at kind of restructuring our protocols. We are working with someone from BOSI's who's going to kind of reimagine the referral forms that we've been using to ensure that they are actually used across the district. So the nice thing are is these Google Forms. We're going to, a teacher's going to be able to put in all the information. Once, once that information is submitted, that is sent directly to the building level principal, who then can start scheduling RTI meeting. We're going to be looking at the resources that we're going to be using to support our, our staff. We're also going to be creating a bank of interventions that all teachers across the district can actually access. So one of the biggest things is if I'm a classroom teacher and I have a student who is struggling maybe with, with blending words, I, I always go to literacy. But I'm not really sure what's a good strategy to help this child. I should be able to go someplace, identify a strategy, use the strategy, and then be able to get data. And that's something that I think across New York, we're missing kind of that, that bank of research-based strategies, because it's not something that's really taught in teacher programs. Like, these are all the research-based strategies. Like, unless you have a reading license, you don't really know about those things. And in our previous format, structure, a lot was falling on our AIS teachers, who we need to be available to work with our needy students. And that always kind of occupied where training teachers on how to use interventions. So we're going to make sure that the teachers have them at their disposal, so there's a little bit more independence there. We're also going to be relooking at our different tiers and talk about how, what tier one looks like, tier two and tier three, and there's going to be professional development around that. And then this is basically the budgetary implications. So we are going to have a point two position from BOSI's, who is going to be here once a week in addition to eleven days of support. That person will be working around helping us with our math implementation, iReady, as well as doing some science support. We're going to be purchasing our foundations consumables. I will be doing all the professional development around guided reading and foundations. We, we're, there's going to be our hands-on kits that we're going to be buying, as, as well as PD that's attached to it. Again, the addition of the teacher toolbox resource. We will need obviously substitutes for when teachers have to go to their trainings, even though right now all the trainings will be virtual, but we still need to cover them. Procession hours for curriculum mapping design. The other thing is that we are going to, next year, be looking at replacing our current math curriculum. The curriculum that we're using is the one that's on, that the funk, Engage New York, Engage New York's going to be phased out, but we are using those modules. Those modules are aligned to Common Core. Common Core is being phased out. We need to find something that addresses the next generation standards. The reason we can still use Common Core is our students are not being tested on Common Core yet. They're going to be tested on the next, they are being tested, I'm sorry. They're being tested on Common Core, the next gen standards are going to be tested next year. So we need to start looking for new materials. It's not something that should be my decision, it should be a district decision. So there will be a committee that we can talk about, looking at different programs, having people come in and present, and, and so that we can make kind of like a really well-informed decision as to what's going to be the best math curriculum for Beacon City School District. And again, there's going to be also some professional learning for our building level administrators. And most of the services will be through BOSI's, therefore it is aidable, therefore it is sustainable. Questions?
I just want to quickly also throw out that, just a reminder that we have the three one-year TOSA positions to help a lot of this work, so, that we're funding through the federal fund, so it's not a general budget, but we have one that's going to focus on getting this SCL work kind of coordinated and, and more off-the-ground at the elementary level. We have the position to help get the restorative practices work going, you know, more fully at the high school. And then we have the, the TOSA position for K to eight RTI coordination. So not all of what Saggy was talking about, but some, you know, we're trying to put some funding that next winter, spring, we can evaluate whether we want to continue any of those positions through the general budget. But we saw the opportunity to fund them through the federal monies for this year and, and, you know, see how effective they are. But we're excited to have, you know, our own teachers helping with the work next year too.
Yep. Preguntas?
That's a good presentation. Thank you. Matt, I'm wondering if you could characterize, it seems to me this is quite an upgrade from what we've been doing in the past. So how would you put a metric on that? Are we doubling on professional development here or what?
Um, I mean, pre, the, the year before the pandemic, we, we had quite a bit going on, and then, and then when, you know, the, all the restrictions kind of became in place, we, we scaled back quite a bit from some of the virtual sessions, some of the, you know, some of the SCL work we're talking about. I feel like though, doing those trainings in a Zoom environment maybe isn't always as effective. But it's, it's a, it's a well-articulated plan. I mean, one of the cool things, we didn't, we didn't quite say it this way, but, you know, we've been doing a, a number of student focus groups. We administrators have been doing them. The folks helping us with the strategic planning have been doing some as well. Now, the students may not always say it exactly the same way, and they don't say it quite like I'm about to say it, but the, the need for sort of more hands-on science is something that you hear fourth graders say all the way to seniors, seniors in high school. And so, and so, you know, Saggy moved up as a result from that feedback, she moved up that science work and, and kind of fast-tracked that a little bit too, so. So anyway, it is a huge, huge increase from what we've been doing for the last two years, for sure. That's the short answer to what you're saying. But I, I love that a lot of it's based on data, but some of it's based on data of listening to students and, and, you know, they're really desiring more hands-on work. And, and I think, I think the expectation that teachers just figure it out all on their own is just kind of a ridiculous notion. I think Saggy's really smart about that. And so we tried to look at some things that really support teachers in doing this. They don't have to reinvent every single wheel. And so I think having that science curriculum at the elementary level is going to be a real game changer.
Yeah. Thank you for all the work. It was, it's clearly so much thought and effort went into this and a lot of research and pulling together a very.
I have to say.
Wide range of things.
It's been wonderful working here. You know, and I, and I, it's been, I think I was telling Anne Marie yesterday how happy I am here. You know, I think there is such an, any energy and such an enthusiasm, and people want to do this work, and everyone wants to roll up their sleeves, and I have to say, it's been a pleasure. Like, it truly has been, and so I'm, I'm excited when I come to work. So it's been, it's been nice. It's been my dream job, so.
That's great.
Well, that's nice to hear.
Well, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, sorry.
I'm so, so sorry.
One, just the, in terms of the Common Core math moving into the next generation learning, how different is it? Like, that was such a big leap for people and, and it really freaked parents out, and so I'm just wondering, like.
So I, I did have an opportunity when they first introduced the next generation standards to actually go up to Albany. I feel like it was like a thousand years ago, but, and what they did was they, and actually, I could do that in a presentation. There is something called a crosswalk, and what they've done is they actually show the Common Core standard and how the next gen standard looks different. So there are some things that are the same, you know? But one of the things that they did was particularly in K two, they made some of the concepts more developmentally appropriate. And what they did also was for teachers, they provided more examples about what they meant about, in terms of, not fidelity, proficiency. So that was kind of like a big deal. Like, what does it mean when, to be proficient in something? So they really explained that for second grade, it means that if a student can figure out an arithmetic problem with tools, they're considered proficient. It doesn't have to be with automaticity. So they actually took time to kind of explain that. And they also created a bank of vocabulary words so the teachers can use as a, as a reference and look at those modules. One of the things that they also did, there were certain concepts that were introduced One of the things that they also did, there were certain concepts that were introduced in some grade levels that they actually removed and moved to upper-grade levels. So I think, if I remember correctly, fifth grade, there was one unit that was moved out of fifth grade and put into sixth grade. So there, there are, I have to say, in, I don't see a lot of changes in ELA. I did see some changes in math, you know. And what I could do, I could send the crosswalk to, to the board to look at because it's a, it's kind of, there's an at-a-glance and it's, it's pretty easy to follow. And you're really able to see what those changes are, so you can have as a reference.
I'd be curious to see.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. I have it all saved on a, on my drive, so.
And then the only other question I had was just in terms of the workshop model. How different is that from the way teachers were teaching? Or were some teachers already sort of teaching that way or?
A lot of teachers were doing that. I, I think what traditionally, I, I think a lot of, you know, we, I know I was an elementary teacher, we tend to be generalists. So, and we think that reading is taught one way, math is taught one way, science is taught, you know, and what have you. But really, teaching is teaching. And what I've seen a lot, and this is everywhere with math, that there, the teacher does introduce a concept, they do a problem together, and then there's a, then they go off and they do that independent work, and the teacher walks around and checks. And works individually sometimes with a student, and then they review the problem. So the, the difference with this would be is that they would be actually pulling a group. And the group that they're pulling is a group that they know may need extra assistance based on the work that they're producing. It may be based on an assessment that they gave. Because that gives, I think, more consistent, direct instruction. Because I know, and for me personally, I struggled in math. There were times that math class literally sounded like the Charlie Brown teacher, and I had no idea what was going on. And it was, and till this day, I actually get anxiety when I walk into math classes. It's like a, it's like a, like PTSD where I'm like, I think I'm actually sweating, you know. Because, and I remember being that kid. So I am kind of sensitive about students who struggle in math because they should. Math should be accessible to everyone. And the one thing I will say about the modules that are online right now, that we have to kind of move away from, I do wish I learned that way because I do think that it's easier for kids to learn the concepts. What I feel that I learned a lot was a lot of rote. Not every kid can memorize the timetables. But doesn't mean they can't learn the timetables, you know. So I think there needs to be more of an emphasis on learning the concept, even if it takes someone a little longer, as opposed to this rote automatic, because it doesn't mean you know the concept.
Right. That was the one thing that I was impressed with, with the Common Core math. I didn't know it's problematic, but that my kids were actually doing math in their head. And I never learned to do math in my head, and it seemed like a really valuable skill. I still see them doing it, you know, and.
Yeah, so, so I, I have to say, and the biggest problem with the Common Core was the rollout.
Yeah.
I, I think that's what really caused. And I, I will say that when they initially came up with the progressions in math, like, no one from the state is hearing, right? I personally think that some of it was developmentally inappropriate.
Yeah.
I don't think our kids were ready for some of the concepts.
It's also tied to AP PR, so.
You know, and, and, now don't get me started on that, yes.
I just wanted to keep doing that. Any guess? No. Thank you. Are there, yeah, you, I think you guys are connected, so. Is there anyone else that had a question from your board? Okay, thanks so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to seek legal counsel from the school attorney? And the board will return in about, uh.
Can I make a point of order? Can we pull two items from the consent agenda and act upon them before the? So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, remove fourteen point oh four J three and fourteen point one three, um, from the consent agenda and vote on before we go to exec.
Andrea, a second for that.
Second.
Kristen, are there any comments or questions about that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, so we're seven, seven to zero. So should we vote on?
Now you vote on individually.
So can I have a motion to approve fourteen point oh four J three?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, wha- wha- what exactly is that?
Fourteen point oh four J three is, sorry, my computer's about to.
Instructionalist appointment.
Yeah, instructionalist. Yeah, but do you wanna? Is there anybody you want to flag? Fourteen point oh three, I have, I have a question. Fourteen oh four J three. Before, okay. Is, um, basketball Patrick Shutter's, um, coaching second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. I'm also in favor. Uh, anyone opposed? Sorry. Passes seven to zero. And then can I have a motion to approve? Sorry. Uh, fourteen point one three.
So moved.
Flora, is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Congratulations.
Yeah, very exciting.
Really happy to have you.
So excited.
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm also in favor, passes seven to zero. So, yeah, hang on, I have to do the motion to, um, go to exec.
Gotcha.
And I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to seek legal advice from the school attorney and the board will return in about, uh.
So moved.
Second.
Anthony, Kristen, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to zero. Reviewing the agenda, there are changes. Fourteen point oh three, non-instructional personnel. Changes are involved. Fourteen point oh four instructional personnel, changes are highlighted. One four point one three has added to the consent agenda today. Item fourteen point ten revised MOA with C A O P. And item fourteen point one one, uh, revised side letter with ETA. I do not see any parent groups or school student presentations in the audience. So we're gonna move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, I'm just gonna provide a few quick updates on some things tonight. Number one is an update on our strategic planning work. The Strategic Planning Steering Committee met last week and went over, uh, the data from the community survey that went out before spring break. We're gonna do a more formal share. The Strategic Planning Committee needs to meet, uh, meet one more time to go over the data a little bit more. But it's, it's very, the data is very much in line with a lot of things that we're currently working on and some inspiration to do more. So there's a lot of feedback around making our curriculum, uh, more diverse and reflective of our community. Also, um, also, you know, working on, um, hiring for diversity among our instructional staff especially. There was feedback about making, uh, communication. While we did get, uh, some positive feedback on communication, uh, making communication consistent amongst all six schools. Clear, regular, timely, uh, communication, uh, from all aspects of the district. There was also some really compelling feedback about just really expanding opportunities for all students and, and making, uh, the opportunities that we have for students more accessible. So if it's after school or before school type things, uh, both expanding what we do with students, but also finding ways to get more students involved. So we'll do more sharing on the strategic plan work. I'm just giving a very quick overview, uh, on that. But, uh, we got really exciting feedback and we're excited to be moving forward with that. We're gonna be doing some budget, uh, learn more about the budget events. We're gonna do one or two in-person events and we're gonna do some Zoom sessions as well. We're working on the calendar. We should have that finalized in the next couple of days. I wanted to provide an update about pre-K. So one of the things that has kind of, uh, become more official between board meetings is the, uh, pre-K contribution from the state. So we did receive, uh, additional funds for pre-K from the state. And I also wanted to provide just an update on, you know, we talked at, uh, the last board meeting about having the four full-time pre-K classes, um, one at each of our schools. As I was kind of internally predicting, those were gonna fill up fast. And indeed, they have already, uh, at, at a pretty early stage. So we, we've been talking internally about using some of the new state funds, uh, to create a fifth class. But we wanted to talk more formally about that at the next board meeting. Would be a little bit more prepared, but I wanted to just kind of start previewing that. There certainly is, uh, um, there certainly is in, pretty high interest in the community for having more pre-K slots. This expansion of pre-K funds also allows us to have more community slots at our, uh, community providers as well. Anne Marie, am I getting all that correct? I've also wanted to just sort of throw out, um, that, you know, the, the capital project work is also moving along. So we've been meeting regularly with the team. The team is our architects, our internal people, um, and, uh, and our construction management firm. So, uh, we're, you know, working on the bid process, uh, for this work coming up. They're also getting final approvals from the state. We'd like to do, you know, we, we're, we're gonna be working on scheduling a full update to the board at a board meeting. So Meredith, I'll speak to you about, we can do something as early as the May ninth meeting or it could wait till the June sixth meeting. But Perry, um, Perry would do the bulk of that presentation, um, probably instead of having it zoomed in. But we'd like to, you know, it's a complicated project. There's a lot of moving parts. There's, you know, there are some supply chain kind of things that we're concerned about and, and we just wanted to, but also just a lot of things moving forward. So we wanted to provide a update to the full board coming up. So I'll work with you on scheduling that, uh, and that's all I have for tonight.
Can I just ask a question about the UPK?
Sure.
So the additional funding that you've got is tied to the, still to per pupil, right? It's not, it's, it's still tied to the per pupil cost. So they increased the amount of kids that they're, uh, giving funding for, correct?
Yeah, 'cause we received the additional money equated to twenty-three additional slots for children. And the full-day program allows us a reimbursement of, uh, fifty-six hundred dollars, which is double, um, the amount that we would have gotten before. So we were getting close to.
But you can't apply that to offset the cost because it's only like sixty percent funded?
It's, it's historically been between sixty-five and seventy percent funded, yes. And so we envision that to be, you know, based on salaries and, and, you know, creating the budget. We did have a conversation with the state senator, Matt and I, um, on a Zoom call. And there is competitive funding available as well. So, um, Cassandra Orsers, our pre-K coordinator, she and I are gonna look into that as well as additional resources, but.
Would that help offset the cost more?
Mm-hmm.
And is it, is it like a grant we're applying for that we're going up against other?
It's a competitive grant, so we're going against other districts. Whereas the additional money that we were able to get in the state budget is ours. And we are, you know, utilizing it, um, to increase the amount of kids that.
Is it a really drawn-out grant process? I can't remember the details.
It, it could be, yes. Yes, we did not look into it last year, it was available last year. But with our, with our model last year, we didn't, because we weren't utilizing our total allotment of pre-K money. Just because we didn't have the number of kids. But we've seen, you know, a big interest in pre-K, it's already full. And we're able to put, um, the remainder of the children to the CBOs.
I would just like to see how the, what it requires the district to sustain it. If we do increase it, to sustain it for the future years, when they're giving us a, they're basing it off of the foundation aid, I think, the per pupil cost. They might add a couple hundred dollars to it. So we're sixty percent funded or sixty-five percent, seventy, whatever it is for Beacon. How can we sustain that if we add and take advantage of it? Because it is tied to the additional students attending. How can we sustain that going in future years?
So one of the things the state senator mentioned to us, but this was a, um, this was something that was a phase in. So he's anticipating over the next two to three years. I know you're looking at longer than that, but that this funding would either stay the same or increase. Because th- this is the big initiative with the state.
I know, I just would say we put it in writing, just like in two thousand eight with the foundation aid. That will always be there, and then it's not there, right?
It's a very good point, Mr. White, yes.
So, like, they say it, but they don't put it in writing and, and put it in, in your, uh, district calculations. And they'll say, yeah, it will be there, it will be there, it will be there. And then it's not there, similar to foundation aid. And now they're trying to rectify that twelve years later, thirteen years later.
Right. I mean, I think the one thing for Beacon, um, some other districts, and we had this conversation with, with him and his, um, assistant, other districts never had pre-K before and are getting the pre-K funding. So Beacon was lucky enough to have funding before. So we've utilized that plus been able to pay for some of it out of the general fund. So it's not as big a hit for us because we try to maintain without, you know, raising the levy for pre-K. Because we've had it in our, in our budget before. Whereas he was telling us some other districts are struggling to start the program because now they're taking an impact in their general fund as well. So, um, I'm, I'm a little.
I'm, I'm curious if there is, I mean, it's a little bit of a hard thing to measure, but I wonder if there's any data on, in terms of having a pre-K program and in, in terms of just, um, reading levels and sort of, you know.
There is, but it's when it applies to students that are economically disadvantaged and students that don't have access to it. So with the lottery system, you can't pick.
Right.
So it, like, I could apply for it and I could go in the lottery. I could afford it, right? So it's not like we get to pick who we want to use it for.
Right, so it's not a hundred percent.
Right, so I mean, like that data piece, right? Some people would already have it.
I understand that, but, um, so, you know, yeah, you can't say that a hundred percent of these kids would be costing the district in other, for services later, um, or we, that we would be avoiding that. But, but for some of them, certainly.
Could, I mean, but also some with a family, one may get it and they can't afford the other one, too, because of the lottery piece.
I hear you, and I, I think it would be great if, if it was guaranteed.
And I'm not, I don't wanna, I'm not against UPK. I, I think it's a great thing. I think that the state should go all in and fund it, uh, appropriately. But I also think that there's things that we need to do for our school-age kids that we were not doing yet, that we need to address and to add additional costs as to forty percent of a UPK program that we would be putting general funds towards or federal funds right now, right? But general funds in the future that we're gonna be putting towards, that's taking away from what we could do for school-age kids. So I think it, it sounds great. It's something that the politicians are selling and, and they want to because it's a good feather in their cap when they're running. But I think as a school district, we have to look at it more granular to see how is it gonna impact our school-age kids.
So all you're asking for is that we run the numbers and look at the future costs of sustaining a program like this if we had to absorb it.
Yeah, a- and, and where, where is that money going now that we're taking? Because we, it's in our budget, we're gonna expand. Where is that money going or is it taking away from the unappropriate fund balance? So can we not save appropriately? Like, I, I'm not.
It's a funny thing, though, also, because there, then if you don't take the money, then it's, you're not pushing that programming forward either in terms of, I, I, I think you're right. We need to, we need to be physically responsible.
I mean, fundamentally, correct me if, or anybody correct me if I'm wrong, in New York City, it is fully funded.
Yes.
And has been.
But the rest of the state, it's not.
Yes.
And I, I do think, you know, and I, I've said it too, um, I think Anthony's making a good point. Like, it's, no one ever talks about the fact that it's not fully funded. They just say, we're giving you more money for pre-K. I mean, I appreciate, I really appreciate the efforts because they are trying to equalize this with New York City. And that's always been a huge disparity. And I think it's right to point out, too, like, it, we, it has to be available to everyone and through a, like a lottery-type thing.
Give us the money, but let us, and say it has to be for pre-K, but don't tie it to a per pupil. Don't tie it to, it has to be a lottery system. Don't tie, right, so that's the piece that I, I'm, I have a hard time saying, hey, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this. And they're dictating how we can use it and, and let us decide what's best for our community. And instead of saying, oh, we're gonna fund the UPK, no, you're not. You're not, you're tying our hands and it's not gonna benefit our community to the best that it can. So, yeah, you're, you're putting the district to have a black eye to say, you're not utilizing these funds. Well, we're not utilizing these funds because we're worried about sustaining it or because it's taking forty percent of our general funds away from school-age kids that we need to improve. That, we have time, right? That's the gift of time with pre-K. So, and, and I know that's a cliche to say, no, we wanna use it for them. But don't tie our hands on how we use it. And I don't mean to come off harsh about UPK because I'm a firm believer in UPK. My kids all went to UPK and, and to, to pre-K. And I just think that the state is advertising it that they're doing this great thing, but they, they, they're not seeing what it's doing at a local. but they, they, they're not seeing what it's doing at a local level and how it could impact school age kids because resources have to be pulled from somewhere to, to, to do that.
Sure, no, I completely understand, I think we should put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I just added it. I think it's also something that should be communicated about the complexity of it, because it's always hard to pull something back once you've given it to people. And so if we do, when we have these budget meetings and we talk about adopting the budget, we should really talk about how we would have left this on the table if we didn't do it. We would have left this money, we wouldn't have expanded the programming, but that it's not, it's not always going to be promised in the future. I do think, one thing that I think about related to having access to a, to a free pre-K program, even if it's a lottery-based one, is simply that a lot of women left the workforce during COVID because you could not, you know, there was no childcare, there was no options. I mean, the idea of even having three hours a day to put together a resume, to be able to have, like, make some phone calls, to do that stuff, would be invaluable time. And I do see some of the policies that are being put in around schools about addressing some gaps that opened up during the pandemic. I think on a granular level, you're right, it's something that we can't say for sure that we're going to sustain, that we also can't say for sure that, you know, isn't coming as a trade-off. And so that needs to be a wider community discussion for sure.
And I, I, I wanted to, you know, like I said, kind of provide a quick update. We were thinking at the May ninth board meeting, if, you know, possibly doing the capital project update in a more formal way and also talking about this a little bit more in depth too. I mean, however in-depth you all want to go. But it's, I mean, I, you know, eight years ago, I was in Ithaca and we were having a bad fiscal year. And the thing that we started, because Ithaca had a huge pre-K program, and the thing we started to cut back on was pre-K. And we had, I had to say things that Anthony's saying, like, we have to make sure K to twelve is functioning before we're off, you know, before we're offering this full, because it was almost a full pre-K program for the community. And I think they've been able to build it back a little bit since then, but it's, you know, it is something, it, it's a reality of it.
And it's hard once you start it.
Yeah.
Right, it's going to, you can't, it's hard to take away because then that, that's hard, right? And, and, and stuff, so I just want to be, make sure, make sure that we're doing our due diligence and, and how is it going to impact the school age before we start something?
What, you mean like, just not do it at all this year, when we have monies, money attached to it?
Yeah, I, I need to know what, what's going to be missing, right? I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to jump in, I don't want to vote for something and that, I don't know all the information and then say, yeah, I, I mean, if it came up now, I would vote no. And, and it's hard to sell, to sell me on what would make it better, like, those are questions that I have, like, how come the state can't say it's going to be guaranteed funding in, in future years and put it in writing? They're saying it verbally, how come they can't say that?
I think, I mean, I, I completely hear you. I, I, I think that it does mean we're taking advantage of something that we do have for this time period. And I know it's hard to pull something back, but I think if we, with two things that we have here, I'm sure Matt, like, when you were at Ithaca, because there was a robust universal pre-K program, I'm sure there was very little programming then for, like, not a variety of programming for pre-K kids through other institutions. So there wasn't an infrastructure, we do have a pretty good infrastructure here in Beacon for that. So I think that if we bridge it for, you know, if we use this money for a while, the ti, for the period of time we have it, it's, we communicate that it's not a sustaining program, it's something we're trying out as a pilot, then we get to use the funds that are offered and, you know, I think address some, some issues that arose during the pandemic that, that this offers, you know, it's hard for somebody to, who hasn't been working to suddenly afford to pay for childcare. So if they, if they have the option of giving their child enrichment and they win this lottery program and they can, you know, I do know people that, I know somebody who does own one of the pre-K preschools here, and they have people on their list who they've told, you know, it's a loss for them, but they're like, I know these families are having a rough time and they've told them to enter the lottery for this. So it's, you know, just something that, I think if we approach it as a pilot program. But, you know, we'll all vote on it, so.
I'll bring you back some financial information, because we have been putting in a, a share of the general fund over the years, because we've had the program. So I think more app, you're looking for not a bigger financial impact to the general fund.
Right.
Going forward.
I'm sure what you're, you have what you've been spending when it was a half-day.
Correct.
Right, but this, this year you had, what, two full-day classrooms?
They had one full day.
One full-day classroom and then half-day.
Right.
How is it going to impact going to four full-day, possibly five? What's the impact for four, what's the possibility, what's the impact for five?
What's the impact to the taxpayers that are going to hit the general fund?
Right.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking it's pretty close to being even, but.
And then if you're using federal funds, what federal funds are we using? Because we know in twenty, in twenty-four.
We're, we're, we're just using the U P K funds and the, the regular share of general funds that we have used as well. But I'll show you all that, I'll be more than happy.
So, so, Amory, I assume, I gather what you're doing is an analysis to show scenarios, is that right?
I have to do a budget, so I can show you a budget of the total budget for pre-K, how much is being paid by the U P K money and how much the general fund is picking up.
Okay, thank you.
And now one thing, just the amount of kids for the future.
Because our, our reimbursement rate for full day is more than our half-day, so I'll show you that too.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports and board comments, John?
No comment.
Melissa?
The next meeting of the Policy Committee is May seventeenth, which is also the Budget Vote Day. We'll be doing the policy meeting at eight P M. that night, right before the canvas of the votes here. At least that's what's on my calendar.
I, I want to confirm, was eight, did eight work for? I know Kelly, you had emailed me at some point about it, and I can't remember if you asked for a slightly different time.
We moved it up from eight thirty to eight.
Okay. Perfect.
So that I can go down.
Okay, great.
What day was that?
The seventeenth.
The seventeenth.
It is still eight?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Oh, no. Anthony?
The Curriculum Committee has not met since our last board meeting, is due to me, it was going to meet tomorrow, correct? But it was canceled, Saggy? Curriculum Committee was canceled for tomorrow, correct?
Yeah, because it was just the smaller committees, yeah, we had that big, so.
No other comments?
Kristen?
The next Facilities Committee, I had it in my mind, and then everyone started throwing around dates, I think it's May ninth.
May twelfth.
May twelfth. Yeah, that's it.
With Audit Finance.
Right, okay.
That'd be another tag team, May twelfth, so let's just clarify the times on that then.
So, is it?
We want to do.
Seven for, do we want to start earlier?
We usually do Audit Finance at six and then do.
Okay.
Facilities at seven?
Yeah, that's what, so seven.
Audit at six and Facilities at seven.
Yep, and that's.
Sold.
My only comment is thank you so much for the excellent professional development presentation. It was really informative and reflects a lot of thought and hard work, and we really appreciate it.
Craig?
Yeah, we, we didn't have Audit and Finance, but we did, at our previous meeting, go over the internal auditor candidates and had presentations from each of their teams. And left it to Anne Marie to go in to do some due diligence on recommendations and references and so on. And so the recommendation that comes in is on the agenda tonight. And I think we're, we're, we had three good proposals. I thought we did very well going out into the world of other folks from different areas. And I'm very happy that we're at the point of being able to do this and to keep on something resembling a schedule of activities that we have in mind. So I think it's what, eighteen thousand five hundred is the price of their, their bid? And they're ready to roll, so I'm pleased to see that.
Thank you, Flora?
The next meeting for the Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Committee is May ninth at six. I did just send around some stuff for us to, to work on leading up to that, including F V C around free universal school meals as well as communication, like, you know, board roles and responsibilities in terms of communication with the public for the discussion at the meeting. Sorry for the delay on that. And I'm also very, very excited about what's coming for curriculum. It, and I love hearing when somebody who's taking care of our kids calls it their dream job, that's my dream response, so that's great. And that's it.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm, I'm talking to Kelly Lappin tomorrow about the connecting with Lawrence and Education Coalition around the charter school bill, so I'll.
Excellent, okay, perfect.
And I just wanted to let everyone know, I attended a workshop through NISBA on Friday about the superintendent's evaluation, how to make it a more robust process. And it was actually really helpful in terms of thinking about it as a, a year-long calendar process that we begin in the fall. Unlike the board evaluation, it's not optional, everyone's really supposed to do, or we're supposed to file something. And so I was going to add that to, that was not a, that was a passive-aggressive remark.
It's warranted, yeah.
But the, so I was going to add just that general idea of it being, you know, a full calendar to our school board handbook. And I'm looking at that, I, I just want to remind everyone that's a living document. If anyone has anything that they want to add to it, please feel free, and I can send the link around if anyone wants to. And that's all for me. So, we don't have any new business tonight, we have under unfinished business. We have a, we have the minutes from the public, last Public Relations Committee meeting.
Aren't they voted down?
Can I have a motion to approve twelve point O one?
So moved.
Second. Flora, Kristen, comments or questions?
Wasn't this voted down at a previous board meeting?
This was.
It's back, baby.
Oh, so we just, we can add it again and again?
It's resurrected.
You can't add it at the same meeting.
I know.
I'm sure you know.
The people must know what happened.
Former board press. Any other comments or questions? I, I had a conversation with Anthony about him not approving the minutes from various committees that are coming from, from board members. And I think that maybe we came to a solution, so.
Oh, that's exciting.
So we can, we can talk about it actually at the PR committee.
Great.
And just in that conversation, I said the same thing that I said publicly at a board meeting.
Yeah, it's not a secret at all. It just is, we're going to, I, it's going to come from district.
I didn't want them to think that I told, said anything different.
No, I know.
I said the same thing that I said publicly at a board.
He didn't, he didn't give an inch, that's, that's important.
You can depend on that.
Yeah.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I am in favor.
Not a fan of my writing.
Passes.
A hill he's going to die on.
Moving on to, we're voting tonight to, on the Bosse's budget and board candidates for Bosse's. So can I have a motion to approve thirteen point O one, the Duchess Bosse's administrative budget for twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Flora and Craig, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, passes seven to zero. Are there any nominees or any, I guess we just vote for the two candidates that have been nominated? So can I have a, so do we just vote? Sorry, I didn't think about how this. Okay, so I would like to have a vote for, the first one will be for Ralph Chiumento from Spackenkill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to zero. And for Gully Stanford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes seven to zero. The Consent Agenda. The use of the Consent Agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss a particular piece of business on the Consent Agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed from the Consent Agenda?
Just be mindful that we pulled to worry.
Yes. I am mindful of that. Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve fourteen point O one through fourteen point twelve, less fourteen point O four, J three?
So moved.
Second.
Kristen and Anthony, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And in favor, passes seven to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Flora, second, Kristen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, passes seven to zero, thanks. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.